Welcome to the March 19th, 2018 Fisher City Council Meeting. We, let's see, we have some announcements, disability awareness events. Cecilia, would you like to go?
This year's theme is "Share Your Story", and so we're encouraging people with disabilities to share their stories, and for the community to engage in meaningful conversations to better understand what life is like for those with intellectual and physical disabilities. So the Fishers Advisory Committee on Disability has organized a month-long initiative to provide events to educate the community on accessibility, employment of people with disabilities, highlight the athletic talents and artistic abilities of those with physical and intellectual disabilities. And we've had workshops on dementia and deaf culture and American Sign Language. So it's been, it's been very productive. And so I encourage you, if you'd like to attend any of the events, we have two events coming up. It's the fishers.in.us backslash disability awareness, and we have two upcoming events coming up. And so we, we just appreciate everybody's support, and we really want to thank all of our volunteers and sponsors that have helped to put this on this month of March. And so we want to show you a proclamation right now.
The month of March has been designated as Disability Awareness Month to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities by the Governor of the State of Indiana.
Whereas disability is a natural part of the human experience.
And in no way diminishes the right of individuals with disabilities to live independently.
Enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, an experience full.
In the economic, political, social, cultural.
And educational mainstream of American society.
And whereas family members, friends, and members of the community
can play a central role in enhancing the lives of people with disabilities.
Especially when the family and community are provided with necessary support services.
And public and private employers are aware of the capabilities of people with disabilities.
To be engaged in competitive work in inclusive settings.
Properly include providing individuals with disabilities the opportunities and support.
To make informed choices and decisions.
Live in homes and communities where such individuals can exercise their full rights and responsibilities as citizens.
Pursue meaningful and productive lives.
Contribute to their family, community, state, and nation.
Therefore, I Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, along with the Honorable City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Disability Awareness Month in the City of Fishers. Furthermore, I encourage the citizens of Fishers to seek counsel and input from any person or group with knowledge and expertise in matters concerning disabilities.
And we just want to thank Blast Media for putting this video together. I think it is a beautiful video that really captures the essence of what we're trying to do here in the City of Fishers. And the firefighter that's on the video, he's Lieutenant Brandon Anderson. He has an amazing story. He was in an accident 16 months ago, and he's returned as an active firefighter with the Fishers Fire Department. And he is the first in the nation as an active firefighter to return after having had an above-the-knee amputation. So he's, he's been very inspiring, and he's really helped a lot of people across the nation to return back to work after having a prosthetic. So we have a lot of wonderful things happening here in the City of Fishers. I don't know if the mayor had anything you wanted to add?
Just once again, I want to thank Cecilia Cobble for all of her efforts and the entire committee. I know they put a lot of hours planning this month, and it's been no shortage of activities, and the participation's been wonderful. So Cecilia, thank you for your tireless efforts, and as well as the staff and committee that have been involved. Outstanding. Next one is Counselor Peterson has a special announcement. We're used to being number one in Fishers, and here's another, another example of that, so go ahead.
Thank you, Todd. As most of you know, I'm the hockey guy on council, and this one has a little bit of personal note for me. You know, I've got the HSE Hockey Club, which is a group effort between both high schools, Fishers and HSE High School. My son is actually one of the players on the high school team, so has a lot of special meaning for me. I look out on this group of players that's there, and I can tell you that probably about a third of them I've coached at somewhere in their youth career, which makes it a little bit more special for me as well. And although we did not have the best of seasons as a regular season goes, and now that we're in tournament basketball season, you know, peaking at the right time also comes with its, with its rewards. So without further ado, I want to offer up the HSE 3A State Hockey Championships.
All right, thank you guys so much for the appreciation. So we'd like to award you guys with a picture of the team after we won state and a medal, so.
That's for the mayor.
All right, all right.
It's not about me, Rich. It's not about me. I also, I also wanted to recognize Coach Adrian Render. Adrian, just raise your hand so everybody knows who you are, and certainly did a fantastic job with the team this year. And I'm glad we're able to get you guys in here to go ahead and celebrate your efforts. Now that was probably as well behaved as you're going to see a group of teenage hockey players ever in a, in a meeting, so.
Now, our meeting's about four hours long.
Yeah, I tell you, you guys don't have to stay.
You don't have to stay.
Cole, just raise your hand. Okay, that one's mine.
All right, thank you very much, Counselor Peterson. Congratulations. You did, you guys did a great job. Congratulations. Now we have Troop 109 that would like to come, and you come forward, Brian?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Bale, Assistant Scout Master for Fishers, Troop 109. And we have some Boy Scouts here needing some requirements for citizenship of the community, Mayor Badge. And what better way to learn about local government and their community than attending a city council meeting? So if everybody wants to state their name, then say hi.
It's all right.
My name is Mitch Wangler.
Brayden Doden.
It's so quiet in there.
Amayle Carney.
Maxwell Brown.
Dakota Greiner.
Assistant Scout Master Greg Greiner. Well, thanks for having us tonight, and appreciate everything you're doing.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll let, we'll, we'll hold on for a second while the, while the aroma of the hockey team leaves the. Yeah, that's right. All right, next item on the agenda, proclamation for Vietnam veterans. Counselor DeRimer?
Would any veteran, any audience male or female, please step forward?
There you go, Rich.
The mayor has given me the honor of reading his proclamation. City of Fishers proclamation. Whereas the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act designates March 29th of each year as Vietnam War Veterans Day. And whereas, we recognize the veterans of our armed forces who served our country in the Vietnam War. And whereas, more than 58,000 members of the United States Armed Forces, including over 1,500 Hoosiers, lost their lives, and more than 300,000 were wounded during this horrific war. And whereas, our nation has learned much since its birth, no lesson as fundamental as the one learned after the Vietnam War. To support and respect our veterans and armed forces members. And whereas, we shift our thoughts and prayers to the memories and to the families who never made it home, and pay tribute to the ones we lost in Vietnam. And whereas, may we use this day to recall what was given by the men and women who fought in the Vietnam, and acknowledge how their sacrifices have impacted and will continue to impact lives across America. I therefore, Mayor Scott Fadness, City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim March 29th as Vietnam War Veterans Day. And the City of Fishers and all residents are encouraged to celebrate. Signed this 19th day of March, 2018, Mayor Scott Fadness, City of Fishers. I thank you very much, gentlemen.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda, the motion?
Motion approved.
Second? Motion by Pete, second by John. Is that right? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 031918F.
Good evening, President Zimmerman, members of the council. For the record, Chris Griesel, Attorney for the City of Fishers. I'm here tonight to present on the request to approve a resolution approving the transfer of real estate on Geis Reservoir to the Fishers Redevelopment Authority to be used for maintenance of green space and public park purposes. As you're aware, the city's looking to acquire property on Geis for a public park. The city will own a portion of this real estate for waterfront recreation purposes. The Fishers Redevelopment Commission will own part of the real estate for the maintenance of green space and public park purposes. And to date, the council has graciously passed two separate bond ordinance issues to complete the project, the proceeds of which we'll ask you to make an additional appropriation on later tonight. This resolution simply seeks to transfer the RDC land to the Fishers Redevelopment Authority, and the Fishers Redevelopment Authority will then issue bonds not to exceed $12 million payable from its lease with the Redevelopment Commission. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete. Second by David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Moving on to Resolution 031918, request to approve a resolution to appropriate additional motor vehicle highway funds.
For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The resolution before you is to appropriate additional funds for the MVH. This will relate to the construction of our Public Works Building. This is related to an amendment for the contract, and that was approved at the February 12th Board of Works. The Motor Vehicle Highway Fund has the adequate cash reserves to fund the additional appropriation. If there aren't any questions, I'll step aside for the public hearing.
We'll open up for public comments. If you, if you want to, want to speak on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. There is a three-minute time limit. Anybody wishes, wishes to come forward, you can at this time. No one wishes to speak? I'm going to close the public comment portion of this. Counsel, any questions?
Question for council. Chris, this is being used for the Public Works Building. Is there any conflict of interest for any of us?
Yes, probably would be for you, Pete.
Okay, so there wouldn't be a problem making a motion to approve, but then abstaining on the vote?
I wouldn't make the motion. I think you just abstain from the vote, Pete.
That's fine, just asking the question.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from council? Of a motion? Selena, motion to approve. Second by Rich. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to Resolution R031918A, request to approve a resolution making a predetermination to enter one or more leases, the police department.
Lisa Bradford, City Controller. This is the next step in the process that began last month. This will adopt the resolution that was presented to you in February related to the police station project, which includes the new police station building and the garage. By law, it requires two public hearings. So with this resolution, we're asking the resolution to officially be approved, and this resolution provides certain statutory information regarding the impact of the lease financing. If there's any question, I'll step aside.
Yeah, we're going to open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic may step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Anybody wishing to speak? All right, we'll close the public comment portion of this. Any comments, questions from council?
Chris, same question.
Oh, we do the same thing, Pete, abstain from this.
Okay, do I have any other questions or comments? Okay, motion. Selena with motion to approve. Second by Cecilia. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And any abstaining?
Aye.
Two, so John and Pete abstaining. Motion passes. Moving on to Resolution R31918B, request to approve a resolution receiving and approving the petition of taxpaying citizens requesting the leasing of certain facilities and real estate and taking other actions regarding the proposed lease.
Lisa Bradford, City Controller. This is kind of in correlation with item number nine, and basically asks the council to accept the taxpayer petitions requesting the aforementioned project, the police station and the garage, and securing a lease with the Town Hall Building Corporation. By law, there are 50 required signatures, and these signatures have already been certified by the county auditor. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council? Does this need public hearing?
No.
Motion, any motions? Motion, motion by Rich, second by John. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain?
Aye.
Pete abstains. Motion passes. Moving on to Resolution 031918C, request to approve a resolution appropriating proceeds of the Geo Bonds 2018A for Geis Park project costs.
Okay, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. As Mr. Griesel mentioned, this was one of the bond issues council has approved for the proposed acquisition of the Geis Waterfront Park. And this bond was approved last month, and this is simply the statutory step of appropriating these additional proceeds to be used for purchase. If there are no questions, I'll step aside because it does require a public hearing.
We'll open this up for public comment. Any of those wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. You may step forward now. No one wishing to speak. We'll close public comment time. Any questions or comments from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete. Any second?
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Moving on to 031918, request to approve a salary ordinance amendment.
Just a quick intro here. This is Ethan Lee's first day as our new Human Resources Director. Some of you have met him probably previously as CC's number two, but we're very excited to see Ethan move into the leadership role for Human Resources, and he's get baptized, he gets baptism by fire tonight by being in front of all of you on his first day, so be kind and gentle.
We've been waiting for this moment. Welcome, welcome aboard.
Good evening, council. My name is Ethan Lee, the new director of HR. And after serving 10 years under CC Conover and working for the city, I'm honored to be in front of you this evening. One of my first official acts is to propose an amendment to our salary ordinance, which is asking for a new job title of Human Resources Coordinator. This is not an additional position, but rather would be a backfill of a vacant Human Resources Assistant position.
Good job, first time. There you go. You're a seasoned coach though, too, so I, you know, I trust you. Any comments from, or questions from council?
Make a motion to, I guess, suspend the rules and vote on it on first reading?
Second. Okay, motion to suspend the rules by David, second by Pete, or John, or. Pete, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, now do we?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by David to approve, second by Pete. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Got your first unanimous, good job, thanks. All right, moving on to item 13. R031918D, request to approve Fall Creek Natural Area Exemption.
And I'd like to present items 13 and 14 together, if I could, and then they'll just need to be voted on separately as they relate to one another.
Okay, that's fine.
So both items are for a UDO exemption for eligible exempt entities. The first being Fall Creek Township, and then the second being the City of Fishers. So both requests are for a gravel parking lot in two proposed parks. Doug Allman is here to speak on the Fall Creek Township Natural Area. And then the second is for the Agri Park that was announced last week during the state of the city. The gravel parking lots are being requested due to the, to achieve a low-impact design for both areas. And I would like to also point out that this exemption is just for the material, the layout of the parking lot and the location will be worked out during the tack process.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Fadness, Deputy Mayor McGrath. This is a project that's been in the works for some time. I'd like to give you a little bit of background and history about, about our park. Pardon?
To say who you are, so we have it for the right.
Doug Allman, trustee of Fall Creek Township. I knew I'd forget something. About 2015, then trustee Jeff Hearn brought forth the idea of a, a park. It encompassed four properties. One from Republic, one from a prior family, and one from Dick Richwine. Located were south of 113th Street, west of Southeastern Avenue, and it butts up against the Republic development that's going into the south of us. He brought this forth to then the Township Board that I was on, and so I, along with Ed Offerman, voted to appropriate the funds, and we went about acquiring these four parcels. It's a unique piece of property. Jeff asked me to go out and walk it and look at it, and, you know, I, I thought it was really something special and worth, worth saving and worth preserving. But, but with that property, it's, it's, it's challenging in, in developing. And one of the things we're asking for is a gravel parking lot down in this area off, off of Southeastern. Eventually, we hope to establish a canoe kayak launch. You'll be able to go down the creek. You can either take out at the Hamlin County Park, or you could go all the way to the new Geis Park. The other great thing about this property is. You have to, you have to bear with me because I can't put this under there. But one, one of the great things about this park is this is, this concerns a connector between, as I mentioned, the Hamlin County Park here, as well as we have Flat Fork Creek here, and then the new park. So we could establish some corridors, some continuity. This study was done by Cardinal back some time ago, but it seems like it's coming to fruition. Our council here, Jeff Bellamy, has worked with Hamlin County and as well as done some research on, on our own, and we seem to establish a roadway right away, which would kind of swing into this area down in here, and with the bridge crossed, and, and maybe a little bit more land acquisitions, we'll ride into the Ag Park. And this is coming from Flat Fork. So it's really got a lot of potential. I kind of, kind of want to share with you kind of what we're looking at here as far as the, the land itself. It's a little bright, but, you know, this is the river. You're looking, screaming to the creek. You're looking high down upon a bluff. Mayor Fadness has been out there, Deputy Mayor McGrath and others. Tony from Parks. It's, it's truly a unique property. It's going to afford, I just, I can't get this, this high-gloss photos to come out here. But again, you're, you're talking some very high bluffs. You've got a farm field that we're going to restore into prairie grass and wildflowers for pollinators. Again, this kind of ties in with, with some of the things that the Fishers is doing. Again, another view of the creek. These are just not going to show up, but. It's, it's, it's truly, it's truly a unique, unique place. And we're looking at a Passy Park here. We're looking at providing some sanctuary for wildlife. And we're looking at possible involvement with the schools and as an educational facility, this is a lot of potential. And so we're here today asking for approval of that. I'd like to recognize our two board members that are here, Chad Gerard and Brian Bale. They're fully supportive of this project.
You got one more over there.
Jason Myers showed up.
Make sure you don't forget him. Anybody else?
Jason Myers showed up. We, we've had strong support from other past board members like Emily Alexander. And so this is something we're excited about moving forward with.
Any comments?
Questions?
Questions from council?
Doug, I love the project. The, the only question I have is the driveway, if it was gravel and parking lot, how will that affect? Like, we're, we're trying to be ADA compliant and, and be accessible to people. That's my only question or concern. Like, have you looked at it from that standpoint of being, of people?
We, we've looked at it from that, but it is, that driveway isn't a floodplain. And so DNR is once material that is more susceptible to. I mean, that, that, that parking lot will be underwater at times. And so they're asking us for gravel there. I mean, we could, we can make it as compacted as, as we can to do that, but it's, that would be a hard one. It's just like Luke talked about, we're going to have to go up some very steep hills that you're grabbing hold of trees and pulling yourself up right now. Now, we're going to make that more accessible because even the average person can't get up it. We have some very steep ravines that are challenges. The, the beauty of the park makes it very hard to, to do some things. We're going to have to build some structures. Part of the two-year process we've been looking at is, is trying Part of the two-year process we've been looking at is, is trying to negotiate with adjacent landowner to allow them to come on their land, which would have been great. It would have reduced a lot of costs. But it, this park is more like a shades kind of Brown County kind of thing where it's, it's for ADA, it's going to be, it's going to be, we're going to be real challenged.
Can I ask, have you been able to, and I, I can give you this contact. Rick Edwards, he is the ADA coordinator for Indiana State Parks.
Okay, yeah.
I would suggest just maybe reaching out to him. I have his contact information, but I just would hate for us to approve something and then it won't work, or we're not in compliance, or whatever. That, that's the only thing, that if, if we're able to make it so that it is in compliance, that's, that's my only concern or question. So we could just double check with a couple experts.
Well, in talking to the people that we've talked with about ADA compliance, because we had, we had a brief conversation about this. If we were to take grants and money and that, then, you know, we would be. But as it is, given, given the nature of the, that we're not taking that kind of money, there is no ADA compliance there.
I think one thing, maybe this is a slight legal nuance, but view this park as a township park. This is not land that they're dedicating to the City of Fishers and therefore falls under our standards. This exemption is more about land use and things of that nature. I think we can encourage Doug and his team to work to make it as compliant as possible. But ultimately, those legal compliances would fall between the township and federal entities in regards to, in regards to standards. So this is, it would be different if we were to take an acceptance of this park and, and we wanted to meet a certain standard. But ultimately, you guys can encourage him to do that, but that's going to be a relationship between the township and whatever regulating entities that might be out there.
One, one of the things we're looking at, this isn't a very big dry, I mean, a parking lot as it is. We're just trying to, we, we're wanting to do some work now as far as getting that grass planted and, and things established. It's a starting point. This will not, you're not going to go out there in the next year and be able to use this park. This is a starting point where we can get equipment off the road and, and we can establish some things. We can start in with the trails, and we can kind of get a feel about how much this is going to be used. And, and one of the biggest challenges that we faced in the last two years is Chief Arusa wants to be able to access this with four-wheel drive, should we ever open that up for canoe kayak travel. He wants to be able to get to that creek and, and trans, and transverse the, the area in an ATV. Right now, staying on our property, that's, can't be done because of the severity of, of the, the topography. So we've, we've got about five established points of access. We may be able to come back and use those points to, to establish other things. I mean, we hope to be able to tie into them where maybe they could park at the Ag Park and come in. But this is just kind of, this is kind of a starting point for us. And if we find out we got a lot of use and a lot of demand, and we've got money budgeted, we, we may, and, and the DNR, a lot of this is, is with the DNR is, is whether they'll allow, you know, an imperious substrate there, so.
Yeah, just check with him.
Okay.
Because he is with the DNR, and he's also an expert on ADA.
I think I have his, I have his information. I'm pretty sure I do.
Okay, any other comments or questions from council?
The thing I was going to say was, essentially, kind of along the lines of your question, Doug, actually, you kind of answered it. And I guess I've been on long enough that I've seen Richie Woods.
Right.
Something in the very beginning was not what we have today as far as accessibility and being able to get into that entrance. And it is some gravel areas, and some areas are very flat, but they are accessible today that they were not when he first took it over. But over time, we're able to make, at least where the grade works, more accessibility. So I think, Doug, I'm hearing you say almost the same thing as you did in over time.
And Rich, David, Richie Woods is a great comparison because that's kind of the thing we're going for, is, is this is more of a natural experience. This is, you know, I've had, been approached by tons of people that have different ideas about what, what this, this could be, from disc golf to, you know, also horseback riding, all sorts of things. And, and, you know, we're, we're looking at, at more of a natural area, more of a, you know, get back, get back, I mean, this, this is truly unique. And I've been, I've lived in the county for 30 years, and I don't know of anything that's park-wise that's similar to this, as, as far as the views and things like this. And again, I mean, that's something we can revisit. I mean, we're, we're just looking at a starting point here is basically where we're at now. I will tell you that it's, it's going to be a challenge to put trails in even, and we're going to have to do some work there, staying on our property, so. Any other questions?
No questions, but Doug, I appreciate all your efforts on this. I know you and I have talked about it at great length. I would encourage the mayor and deputy mayor, if we can, to help them out with any grant writing they need done that may help them get some, some money. You know, I want to make sure we're leveraging our expertise because we do that all the time. I'm not really sure the township does that constantly. So I want to make sure we don't miss out on any opportunities for any Fed money, DNR money, et cetera, et cetera, that may be able to plan not only to ADA compliance, but to getting that, that parked on. Because I, I've seen that topography, it is severe, but I think it could be just an absolute marvelous natural resource for the City of Fishers.
I like to say one, I'm working with, I'm working with everybody. The county commissioner, Harbrandt, has been very supportive, getting, getting more of the county surveyors office and their staff. I mean, we've really been working on a lot of things here and a lot of people, and I probably forget somebody, but, but there's a lot of people that's been involved. And, and we're just, we're just wanting to get started. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Sure, I, Doug, great job, and, and certainly always, always welcome here. A little, little laughter there on our part, a little side joke we have. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Pete, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Let's move on to 14. We got a motion, any motion for 14, item 14?
Is she done giving the presentation?
Have you?
Doing half and half, you're done?
Yeah, we're.
Yeah, so it's essentially the same request that's being made from the City of Fishers for the gravel parking lot.
And I'll make a motion to approve item 14, second.
Motion by Pete, second by Eric, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item 15, 031918B.
Again, my name is Megan Schaefer with the City of Fishers Planning and Zoning Department. The next item also relates to the Agri Park. So this is a request to, for a voluntary annexation of the park. It consists of a total of six parcels. It does meet the state annexation requirements. So tonight, we just recommend that you hold first and second reading in a public hearing.
Okay. We'll open up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, state your name and address for the record. You have a three-minute time limit. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward. Okay, I'll close public, public comment. Any questions or comments from council?
At first and second reading.
Thank you.
All right, item zero, item number 16, 021918B.
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name is Kevin Stutz. I'm the assistant director for the Planning and Zoning Department. I'm here tonight to present the requested text amendment to the yard at Fishers District PUD. I believe all of us in this room are familiar with the, the yard at Fishers District. The original intent of this PUD ordinance and development is to create a unique culinary destination that is combined with entertainment and retail experiences. The requested text amendment would not change that aspect of the development, but it would, however, add approximately 255 residential units into the, and create a, more of a mixed-use development. This would be done by creating and developing a mixed-use multi-story building located on the northeast corner quadrant of the development. So here on the left-hand side of the slide, we have the original PUD ordinance concept plan that was incorporated into the ordinance. And on the right-hand side, we have the requested changes shown to the concept plan. As outlined in the staff report and the PUD ordinance, there are several development standard changes that would go along with this change. Just to highlight a few, looked at increasing the overall height allowance, some parking structure requirements as the mixed-use building. If we start to take a look at it here, this, we're looking at the northwest corner of the mixed-use building. So here, internal to the site and along 116th Street view. If we look to the west-hand side of the multi-story mixed-use building, you can kind of see a little bit of the parking garage, which is otherwise completely wrapped by the commercial and retail on the first floor, and then the apartments on the second, third, fourth, and fifth floor. One thing that was discussed by staff and the planning commission members was enhancing what we call a green screen wall in the parking garage along the, the eastern elevation, as well as kind of upping the landscaping standards in this area, along with the southeast portion of the site where it is adjacent to the townhomes. Here on the backside of the building, you can kind of see where the apartments open up, again, internally on the south side, which you'd almost be looking at the, the yard. Within this area, they plan on having the amenities that are associated with the apartments. I will say, the architecture that you're seeing here was reviewed by the PUD committee in February. They did receive approval for that. The planning commission members did send a positive recommendation at their February meeting as well. At that time, we did not have any public input. But as you're aware, the council members did receive an email from the adjacent property owner to the east here, which is the station's PUD ordinance. This is Mr. Charlie Key's property. And one concern, a few concerns I would like to address in, in my presentation is really what this site and what you're seeing on the site, what it's doing for his access to his project, which was recently approved by council as well. So the, the original concept plan, which was submitted to the planning commission members, did not kind of left out the connection points, which kind of highlight the council's intent as long as, as well as the requirement for this development to not only connect to Mr. Key's project, but also to the Sunbeam land that's owned just to the south of them, and then also to the undeveloped land to the south. So these concept plans are meant to provide a overview of the city's requirement for connection and how they were, will operate and function together. The one thing that has happened is the, the city has vacated the right-of-way for Lynn Drive, and that is located right here. And Lynn Drive provided access to this site today, and it also will in the future. When the property was first taken over, there was a construction fence put along that frontage, which caused problems for that current resident. We have since had Thompson Thrift move that back so that the existing resident in that home can have access to their site. The city did close off the access on 116th Street, but we do fully intend for another access to be approved when this development comes underway. Now, that, that access will be located a little bit further east than what the existing one was. So we certainly understand the property owner's concerns. He wants to make sure that the access to his site is preserved, and he also wants to make sure the city is making sure that the cross-access easements are in place. It has come to my intention that the first cross-access agreement, which was proposed, had some additional language which was not acceptable. We have, the city has asked Thompson Thrift to only include the language which is required by the city, and that language provides the access in between developments. So they understand that, and they have agreed to continue to work with this property owner. So we are confident that we can work this out. Both developments will have the same standards applied to them, and we look forward to the property developing in the manner that was approved on this concept plan. So I hope that at least addresses some of the access questions that were in the email, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have regarding that. I would add finally that staff is recommending approval of the request, but if the council does decide to move forward with approval, we would ask that it's contingent on Thompson Thrift and the city entering into an amendment to the existing agreement concerning the new aspects, excuse me, project agreement concerning the new aspects of the project. So that's the economic development agreement. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but at this time, I'll turn it over to Steve Harden. He's with Fager Baker and Daniels, and he had a little bit more details to the, the request.
Go ahead.
Absolutely.
So you're saying that when the city vacates that, who got tired of it?
So it was vacated on the premise, and the primary plat was approved that it'll switch from public right-of-way to a private entrance with a cross-access easement agreement.
Who's going to maintain it?
The Thompson Thrift will maintain it, yes.
So that's the city gave to them, where they're then going down the middle of the each side like normally.
Yes, because that street was, I believe, established based on the develop, the previous development of the, the residential subdivision.
Chris, that, following the, of course, the, you vacate it, but I'm certain, I'm, I'm, you're showing your, take five, I have to do that.
Right. I'd have to pull the documents relating to this. I, I trust what Kevin has said, but I'm certainly happy to look into it before he read.
So then, if Thompson Thrift has that, that this general public will be able get over to that parking lot, that will be.
The parking lot and also 116th Street. So it'll cover the entire entrance moving north, south, and then east, west as well.
It can come from here to here, and?
Correct, the general public, yes.
Any other questions or comments right now before Steve comes forward?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm of Fager Baker Daniels, and I'm pleased to be representing Thompson Thrift here. Kevin did a great job giving you the overview. The only thing I really was going to add is a couple of things. One, so on the concept plan, this is where that entrance is being shown right now. But as Mr. Key has pointed out to me, that that would go right into where their building was planned. So that's not the planned entrance into his. I think his prop, his entrance is somewhere down here. And so Thompson Thrift has told me, go on the record, tell everybody that's going to be worked out wherever that needs to be located, as the staff is working through the final development plans and coordinating with Mr. Key on his development as well. So that, that piece of it, I just want to go on the record to let everybody know that that's going to be worked out. The only other thing I want to give you an update on, we get questions all the time about start dates and development activity. And so the plan is, is if this moves forward tonight, to be able to start breaking ground in June, to every, the entire project's going to get started. So it's not just one building and one building. Everything's going to get started right away. And then it'll take about an 18-month build-out to be able to start seeing some of the tenants and restaurants coming into place. So I wanted to give you that update. Otherwise, we'd respectfully request your approval tonight and happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Just, Steve, just so everybody else can know, how many three bedrooms are planned in the apartments?
That's a good question. Aaron Reynolds is here, do you happen to know that? Or? Want to text somebody while, while we're, we're talking? Give me a few minutes, we might be able to.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's not a lot, if I remember.
No, no, I didn't.
I thought I asked a question.
Yeah.
Which is where everybody tries to go to on apartments, right? Because they look at the three-bedroom units as family units. They look at impact on school. So obviously with the, the other, so I, you know, sure, get back to some need percentage. I, I believe in talking to the other people at Thompson Thrift, it was a very low number, if any, as I recall, so.
We'll let you know hopefully yet tonight. Okay, thank you.
Really more just for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Council comments? Hold on, I think there's, is there?
Oh. My name is Bill Mashmeyer. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hagerty Hagerty and Mashmeyer at 3045 South Meridian. I represent Mr. Key and KLC Realty, the owner of the adjacent parcel. And so I appreciate the staff's comments and Mr. Harden's comments that this access is going to be allowed with a reasonable term cross-easement to allow him access his property off of this closed Lynn Drive. And also the city's assurances that it will allow us to move our access on 116 that they paved over with the sidewalk over to the northeast end of our property so that traffic can flow down this closed Lynn Drive into the property, through the property, out onto 16th, and we have a smooth flow of traffic. So it was just our concern tonight. I was here to make sure that that was addressed, and I appreciate the gentleman have done that and asked that whatever you approve. and I appreciate the gentleman have done that and asked that whatever you approve, contain language that those things are going to be done to allow us access.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments, questions from council?
Yeah, Todd, I've got some serious things I want to go through.
Hold on, no, no, hold on, hold on one sec.
Yeah, hold on one second. We have, it's not a public hearing right now, so we need to, I need to talk to the council on questions, okay?
Yeah, there are multiple things that I've got issues with with this. Number one, just going through some of the changes, it's a 10-foot setback to a 5-foot 80%, which most of the time you see on developments, they want to go to 90% hard surface. So, it's just a very, this is quite a bit of hard surface on one small site, that the main thing is you're just not going to have as much green as you typically would even on commercial sites. And then also, on the multifamily, it's only 1.4 parking spaces per dwelling unit. A lot of times, you see more in a suburban area. So, those are just things off of that. But the main thing that I had was, I liked this in the very beginning, and that was last year. You had a big project, and I thought for once in Fishers, we're going to get, or maybe not for once, but we're to the point where we can achieve what I kind of viewed the Keystone Corridor. If you go to Keystone, the Crossing, you've got Sullivan, Seasons, Maggiano's, and a lot of the other restaurants. And the reason you have that is you have a couple of restaurants, and then you have a couple more, so you have that activity and that energy, and that's what I felt that this was going to be. You had a culinary incubator, which is a very small, let's face it, it's kind of a small amount of square footage, but the main thing that I liked on the site was you had kind of a node right off the interstate where you'd have a lot of restaurants, and you'd start to get that come to pass. It seems like now, maybe the leasing just hasn't gone to the, to the extent that I want, and I understand that, but this project essentially cuts that in half, and the western side is still the restaurants, but the eastern side is incorporating multifamily, which is not good or bad, it's just when you come in and you have one thing, I'd rather you come in and say that the leasing just didn't work out as, as fast as we wanted, maybe you need to take more time to go through that. But it seems like it's a half-and-half project instead of a one cohesive project for restaurants. Also, they've done a couple of projects in the area, and I haven't had time fully to review, quite honestly. A lot of the, the details that they want to do, but they did 131st and 37, that was one where they wanted to actually take out retail and do residential, and that's gone in, that was a different developer that they brought in. But that's one that's, that's the one with the Walmart and, and other areas. But then also 116th and Cumberland, and quite honestly, that's not at the highest level. I think that we can do at least what we have in the depot. I just don't know that the details fully go through that. So, I've just got a couple of issues where you come in with one project, and then you try to, to change that, and I think more time should be spent in trying to get the rest of it filled out with the restaurant uses and the other things that were contemplated in the original. So, I'd be negative, and I would ask?
Just to be clear, David, I think there might be some confusion. The multifamily's going on top of?
I understand.
The restaurants. So, I'm confused as to the, the comment about all of the bait and switch or the, the change here, because they still plan to have retail on the entire first floor, where if you were to go back to the original mash plan, they had retail?
Yep.
All along there. So, I was curious?
I understand, because I've heard of those today.
Yeah, so I'm curious the, the change you're articulating.
Well, I mean, it's just quite a bit of a change going from a full retail project to this. I think it's important, though, just to keep it the way it is. We're incorporating a structured parking component where we didn't before. I think it was more surface park. Quite honestly, we haven't gone through the performa, did it change that? Because that's a pretty expensive incorporation, and I haven't seen what the performa does. So, we allowed them through our vote to pay quite a bit for the land, and then when you're adding a parking garage, I'm just not sure how that, how that works. But like I said, I like the original plan, and I would like to keep it the same way.
And I certainly appreciate David's comments, and, and it is a little bit different from, from where we started, but I think if you take a look at, you know, some of the projects of most recent, particularly down on Mass Ave and throughout Carmel, particularly along Main Street, you can find that I think by adding those additional housing units, particularly as it relates to one and two-bedroom units, which are more what I would put in the Montiel side, more the kind of people off the numbers and the people who are downsizing, it's putting foot traffic where the retail is. And I think when these guys are doing a, a project this magnitude, one of the things from a lending side, I would think, that, that's going to make this thing work a little bit better, is by continuing to have not only foot traffic drive itself there, but foot traffic being able to walk out of the apartments to go to it. So, I look at it as an enhancement of that particular project. I also like the fact that we're, we're leaving our hub of what I would call apartments within a center core of the urban nature of Fishers, rather than spreading them out all over the place, which I know we've gotten some people kind of pushing back on. But again, it is absolutely a change from where they had begun. I'd look at it as a positive change, we think it's going to go and enhance that, that project, and I see it being more vibrant, like the Carmel and, and the Mass Ave projects with it than without it.
Any other questions or comments from council?
If I may, let's, Brad, you know, certainly, and again, appreciate everybody's comments tonight, but even if I look at Keystone, the Crossing, I used to have my CPA firm there 20-some years ago, in the same building where Ocean Prime is, if you know where that building is. As you've seen how that area has done, done well, the thing that's kind of enveloped that area, if you look a little bit north, there's apartments there, you go over Clearwater Crossing, there are apartments back there as well. Again, I would agree, I think these apartments, although this is a change of what we, from kind of where we started, I think it's, it's a, it enhances the project, gets some more foot traffic, and probably attract the restaurants that, that really are what we really want in that, that project. That's just my two cents worth.
Just the, excuse me, the comment like Dave brought up, going from 80% to 90% hard surface, if there's some way you could work to make sure that 10% is all landscape and like the Plan Commission wanted on the west side to try to hide the garage, 10% isn't much left, but if you could commit that the whole 10% is going to be landscaped somehow.
Yeah, and a big part of that is the, actually, the, the central yard area, which is going to be phenomenal. And I just wanted to make sure if it's okay, Mr. President, just to kind of clarify, the leasing is going extremely well. Their normal threshold before they'll break ground is to have 60 to 70% pre-leased, and they're well on track for that. So, the message should be that the city of Fishers and the yard is well, being very well received. The energy and synergy that the multifamily is bringing to it, really, I think you mentioned Keystone, the Crossing, you know, that's really part of the, the new synergy and energy that's happening there. There's multiple multifamily projects going on right in that area and inside of Keystone, the Crossing, and just like at Mass Avenue, so I think they're really excited about what that's going to bring to this. It provides eyes on the street 24/7, you know, businesses in that area. So, they're really excited about that piece of it, and the leasing's going really well. So, I wanted everybody to know that. I know everybody wants to know about announcements and tenants. I checked again on that, Councilman DeReemer, and they, the tenants are wanting to kind of time that themselves, but they're well on their way to easily meet the thresholds that they have, so.
I keep harassing, in my mind.
No, no, no harassing. I'm, I'm the same way, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Brad, you're one of the Q.
I have a quick question.
Counselor Cogle has questions.
Are the apartments, are they apartments like luxury apartments? Are they, like, what kind of lease rates are we, you know, for the apartment units? What are they, are they considered high-end or?
Yeah, these are definitely, yeah, these are definitely Class A luxury apartments that are going to be just phenomenal. I don't know if they, with the final, with the market rates, I mean, it's all market rates, going to be the top end here in Fishers. I don't know where they're going to land when they finally get done with all the construction and leasing in a year and a half from now, but, you know, these are, this is an outdoor up here on the top, that's a penthouse at the very top. Those are just going to be dynamite, so it's?
So, kind of like the, the depot, kind of like that, or?
I mean, you can look, I mean, the, the fit and finish, I, I will say this, I will allow you to make your own decision. I think Thompson Thrift is extremely confident with their watermark team that the fit and finish is going to be unparalleled here. So, I think you'll be able to see that, and you can tell when you walk through it. If you like the depot, I think you're going to be extremely pleased with what you see here.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
It is the depot, not 116th and Cumberland.
Pardon me?
It is the depot level and not what they did at 116th and Cumberland.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, I don't, I don't think they're even comparing themselves to the depot. I think this is?
But there's a market difference between the two products.
There is, there is, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions from council?
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve, but I want to make sure I add in the requirements that the easement or the, the cross-access easement is allowed, and, and that both Thompson Thrift and the other party are in agreement with where those are at in terms of flow, and staff sign off on it. So, that would be my motion.
Motion.
We can regular public comment again.
Yeah, we'll have?
It's up to you, but if the gentleman who wants to speak pointed out?
We'll, we'll go ahead and open up for public comment. Those wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes for comments.
My name is Charles Key, and I own the station's location. I want you to know that I very honestly met in the staff marked building with Thompson Thrift. We had an agreement, we had an easement agreement that was acceptable. After making notes, I said, send it, the changes, let's get it done, and then a few days later or a week later, they called me up, and they said they had to control my property. They had to review the leases. All my construction has to exhibit, exit on 116th Street. I could not use Lynn Drive. Now, when they imposed those type of restrictions on myself, and very clearly, the plan that they have presented to this board does not show any cross-easement to my property, they have taken 100% of Lynn Drive and used it as a parking area. All you have to do is interpret what's there. I would suggest that you table this and let us get together, see if we can work things out and make it workable. But as it stands now, it's not agreeable. Also, the town of Fishers, without any notice to me, went by, removed my exit and entrance off of 116th Street and put a new walk-in. They also covered up at about four to six foot of depth, as most of you read in my email, my water meter pit. All this was done without any communications to myself. I have been here, and now I am very mad because I was lied to. I was lied to by Steve Harden. I called him up the other day, and I was mad as hell when I saw that site plan. I asked him why they are taking 100% of Lynn Drive for their parking, why they are taking their cross-access into my building, the Plan Commission here knew about it, my engineers called the Plan Commission, no answers. How serious are you about people putting three, four, five million dollars into a small project? What I bought was a very small project. I am presently building, I built the shopping center at 146 and River Road, where Fishers is across the street, Noblesville's there, Carmel's there. I have no problem getting along with anything I want to do in Carmel.
All right, sir, thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's three minutes. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate your time.
I think, Todd, to that point, maybe Kevin, if we could reiterate the legitimate concerns and perceptions of the gentleman and the property owner, which I want to respect, and Kevin, I just want to make sure that we clarify what his concerns are and that the city is addressing those. So, Kevin, you want to, again, just go through that quickly to reiterate what steps have been taken to ensure that he has full access and enjoyment of his property?
So, what we've expressed to Thompson Thrift is the city sets a baseline for what a cross-access agreement easement should require, and what it requires is that each site is going to allow for the general public and the property owners to craft, to flow in between the, the two developments. So, when you see this concept plan here, you see an arrow that's located right here. Now, because we are working off of a concept plan, we acknowledge that it's too far north, it needs to be shifted to the south and line up with what his proposed, proposed concept plan was approved for. So, Lynn Drive is still generally located in this area as it comes down, and what the city's expectations are and requirements per our code is that Lynn Drive will remain an access easement onto this property, onto Mr. Key's property, and it'll also serve as the access to the yard. So, in our conversations with Thompson Thrift, we did share with them what the ordinance, ordinances will require on the secondary plat, as far as the language, and that's what we will hold them to as we move into the next step, next phase of this process through the TAC Committee, and then the same language will be added to Mr. Key's property, all having the access allowed in this area.
So, it's, so just to, not to belabor this point, before Thompson Thrift were to be able to move forward with their secondary plat, they would have to have the standardized language that would provide Mr. Key his access without any of these additional requirements that were originally just in the original discussion?
Absolutely, without them having any control about, over his tenants or his use for the land.
And, and then the water man, Mr. Key, I'll follow up with our Public Works Department to find out what the issue is there.
Hold on, I've never responded to?
I'll, I'll make sure that gets rectified.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, our public comment section is still open, so if anybody wishes to step forward, state your name and address for the record. You have a three-minute time limit. No one wishes to speak, I'll close public comments.
I still think my motion stands as, you know, as, as suggested, along with the caveats that were then clarified by the mayor and Kevin, correct? I think that's what my motion said, is to make sure that all parties are in agreements, including staff, to the cross-easements and access to both free enjoyment of those properties. Are we all on the same page? Okay, that's my motion.
Okay. Motion by Pete, second by Eric, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Oh, I'm sorry.
Nay.
Nay, all right.
I'm abstaining.
All right, so, let's do this again. So, we got Pete and Eric making a motion, approval by Cecilia, John, myself, Pete, Eric, and Brad, correct?
Correct.
Those from David and from Selena. All right, motion passes.
Abstaining.
Abstaining, and Rich is abstaining. Motion passes. Any other unfinished new business? I would like, I skipped over by accident, as we were, I was so excited about our presentations, I skipped over the Finance Committee report, so Selena, go ahead and share that, please.
Well, I'm glad to report that all of the agenda items passed the Finance Committee as well as the council.
It all worked out, right?
That's right. Um, the controller was discussing the stormwater bills that are coming out. We'd like to remind people, do not mail those to City Hall. You receive an envelope that has a, that's a pre-addressed envelope. Please make sure that you send it in there. You can also come into City Hall and make those a payments, as well as make the payments online. And then we continue to work with staff to create committee operational guidelines, and we'll share those as they become available.
All right, thank you, Counselor Stoller. This time, we'll have open for community comment, so this is a new section that we have on the agenda, and anyone wishing to speak on any item related to Fishers, you're welcome to come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have a three-minute time limit. Anybody wishing to speak? Does not have to be on any, any item on our agenda. Okay, I'll close.
Motion to adjourn.
Time for community comments. Motion on the table to adjourn by Pete, any second?
Todd?
Second, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So, one, just as a learning question, Chris Greisel.
Oh, boy.
Um, the, the motion, the Thompson Thrift project, let's say we had asked for additional things that we wanted to look at. I'm only bringing this up because now we go to Plan Commission, then we go to Council. So, I went to Plan Commission on February 7th. It did not go to the February council meeting, so it comes to the March one, so there's really no time, because you still have to do the 90 days, is that right?
You still have, you have 90 days?
This is just a learning thing I'm trying to bring up, so that we limit ourselves, and we don't have time to fully review, if we wanted to say that, hey, let's wait to the next meeting, because that would be after the 90-day window.
Well, no, so, it's 90 days from when the Plan Commission makes its recommendation. So, when the Plan Commission makes the recommendation to you?
Yes.
Then you have 90 days to consider that recommendation, and depending on what the, whether it's a tax amendment or a zone map?
Right.
What will result in, if you take no action in 90 days, the Plan Commission's decision being affirmed as the decision of the city. So?
Right.
In other words, if they came, they came here, the meeting following the Plan Commission, you could table that agenda item for a month, or you could send it back to the Plan Commission with additional amendments, and you'd recertify a new schedule, it's 45 days, and that's the statute, and that's what you have to do. There's always a back-and-forth process that can take place if you want to add to or modify. or modify what's been proposed to you by the Plan Commission.
I understand.
Does that make sense?
Right.
If I can follow up with you, David, too.
Motion on the table to adjourn by Pete, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.